This is BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of Branford.
Okay, let's try again. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The RTM will be convened on Tuesday, May 8th, 2018, at 8:00 PM at the Branford Fire Headquarters, 45 North Main Street, to consider and act upon the following matters. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Representative Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to make a motion to elect Representative Buchanan from the First District to be the Clerk pro tem for tonight's meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Jessica, welcome aboard. Okay, item number one, roll call.
Alright. Representative Edelman?
Present.
Representative Alphon?
Here.
Representative Anderson?
Here.
Representative Black?
Here.
Representative Brockett?
Here.
Representative Buchanan here. Representative Comey?
Here.
Representative Conklin?
Here.
Representative Dakenovich?
Here.
Representative Dunbar?
Here.
Representative Flanagan?
Here.
Representative Hall?
Here.
Representative Henshaw?
Here.
Representative Ingraham?
Here.
Representative Jackson?
Here.
Representative Kelly? Representative Lawler?
Here.
Representative Leonard?
You.
Representative Preet?
Here.
Representative Riccio?
Here.
Representative Sandler?
Here.
Representatives Tepanik? Representative Sullivan?
Here.
Representative Turelli?
Present.
Representative Toohill?
Here.
Representative Walker?
Here.
Representative Wells?
Here.
And Representative Sembrana?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum and...
The moderator? The moderator is here.
Oh, you're not here yet. Do you have a moment here?
I'm trying to get ready.
Okay, and for ex officios, we have First Selectman Castro...
Third Selectman, uh...
O'Hern. O'Hern. And Town Clerk Arpen.
That's it.
And that's it.
That's it.
Okay.
We have four. We do, okay. Item number two, approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
I'll make that one.
A motion by Representative Ingraham. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Representative Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes for the previous meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, abstentions? The minutes are approved without exception. Item number three...
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Point of interest, may I interrupt? Before we go any further with the business, I was wondering if we could do a moment of silence for the passing of Representative Adam Hanson's father and also for Superintendent Hernandez's father, who passed recently, just to honor the services of their parents.
We'll have a moment of silence, please. Okay, item number three, receptions of communications reports of committees and citizens petitions. I have a letter here from Chairman of the Board of Finance, Joe Mooney, to Dennis Flanagan, moderator. A special meeting of the Board of Finance held on December 18th, 2017. The following resolution was adopted, resolved, that the resolution entitled "Resolution Appropriating $5,245,000 For the Blackstone Memorial Library Renovation 2018 and Authorizing the Issue of $5,245,000 Bonds of the Town of Branford to Meet Said Appropriation and Pending the issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose" is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Representative Townee. We already approved this, but we needed to read this into the minutes. The other item I have is from our Finance Director, directed to me, requesting that we send this to committee to participate in the Neighborhood Assistance Act for 2018. And I will send this to Administrative Services. Anthony, I have a copy here later on for you. I have nothing else under correspondence. All committee reports. You have any else? Okay. Dennis? Representative Walker?
Thank you, Dennis. It's not under correspondence, but I would like the whole RTM as a body to give a resounding thank you to Adam Hanson, who's served us very well over the years, and his father has passed away. And he'll no longer, he, Adam, will no longer be on this body. And I think he deserves a round of applause.
Okay. Item number four, the Board of Finance approved the following budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Representative Ingraham?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget as presented from the Board of Finance. The amount of Board of Education operating budget, $56,000,24,747,000, $100. Education, special education, $754,476. Board of Education capital and leases, $483,620. For a total of $57,262,843. Town departments, $54,924,109. Total town budget of $112,186,952.
Is there a second?
Second.
The way we're going to work on this, I will call individual committees, subcommittees. The chairs will give their reports as what transpired out of the committee and any changes that occurred. At that time, anybody who wishes to make an amendment to that particular subcommittee, that would be the time you can do it, okay? So the first committee we'll call on will be the Education Committee. Representative Toohill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The RTM Education Committee had two meetings, March 2nd, and then again on April 12th. And at the meetings present were Representatives Preet, Hall, Lawler, Comey, Jackson, Wells, and myself, Chairman Toohill. The Board of Finance had cut the operating budget by $109,000. So the amount before us was $56,779,223. We discussed it thoroughly with the superintendent, with the Chairman of the Board of Education, President, Mr. Kraus. And the present education system is doing very well. The superintendent stated that the education system is responsive to the needs of our district, that it supports what we're doing as a district, but also always keeps in mind the uncertainty at the state level and the fiscal posture of the town of Branford. So there was a lot of questions. They were asked, they were answered, and it was, as far as the operating budget goes, it was the committee's recommendation to leave it as is, you know, with no changes. So the amount of operating is $56,779,223. We also heard capital items. We took a tour of the tennis courts at the high school and also saw the high school boys' and girls' locker rooms. And there was a cut to the, to capital by the Board of Finance. They cut, uh, they cut the amount of $25,000. But again, we questioned, we discussed it, and the RTM Education Committee kept the amount as is. So there was no change to capital or to operating. The only change that we did make was to the Blackstone Library...
Point of order. Shall we get to the...
Yeah.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah.
I think we're on item number five at this point, which is the Board of Education budget. So if we're done with the Board of Education budget, we should vote on that. We usually vote separately on the Board of Ed, and then we'll move on to the town departments.
Thank you, Representative Black.
Okay. So your motion on the Board of Ed side is the no changes to the budget as approved by the Board of Finance, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? No? Okay. And if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, item passes. Okay, Representative Toohill?
Can somebody second that?
This committee...
What, the library?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We also heard, you know, on the Education Committee, presentations by the School Age Child Care Fund. We heard from Miss Krummenecker. We heard from Paul DeZallo, Adult Education.
Point of order again. I think that, Mr. Moderator, at this point, we should move into the number six, is the town department. So this is where we hear the libraries. The daycare budget, I believe, is item number 10, if I'm not mistaken.
He's doing the library now.
Well, you mentioned the special, the school age childcare, so that's item number 10.
Okay. Thank you, Representative Black. Okay, so, alright, so if we take up the matters of the Blackstone and the Willoughby-Wallace and Stony Creek, we heard the presentation on the Willoughby-Wallace from Ms. Pence and John Malek. And they were asking for $236,906. We, again, we questioned, we discussed it. It was all thorough. And it was passed as proposed. The vote was seven to zero to zero. Okay, that was the Willoughby-Wallace. As far as the James Blackstone, after discussion, there was a vote of four to three to reduce the ask by $19,703. This is for the account that deals with the contracts, you know, for the building itself, like the elevator, the lights, the emergency lights, the cooling, the heating, and all that. The James Blackstone, though, even with that decrease, is still receiving an overall increase this, you know, for the fiscal year coming up. I think the thinking of the committee, again, it passed four to three. The thinking was that, you know, being tax dollars, and because the town is now, the town is providing 86.4% of the cost to operate the Blackstone, that, you know, what the town, the RTM wants to do is they want to scrutinize the bills, scrutinize the contracts, and possibly, if, you know, they can do it, the costs can be, can be cut. So that was what, that was what the idea was behind it. And that was the only change.
So that's your motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Representative Preet?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Representative Sandler reached out to me, and we were able to develop a compromise to the Blackstone Library budget, which we think is very fair to the Library Board and also being mindful to the taxpayers of Branford. So I would like to amend the Education Committee motion that we put back half of the $19,703 reduction, and we increased the Library budget by $9,852. And I want to thank Representative Sandler for his efforts on this.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Representative Sandler, a second. Discussion? Representative Jackson?
I'm a little confused, Mr. Moderator. I don't know if this is the time to be doing this, but in the committee, that four to three vote, I thought was a little mean spirited. I felt it was a little mean spirited because the Blackstone Library was being asked for receipts, for invoices, for what they were maintaining the building for. And while I have no quarrel with micromanaging the budgets of town departments, it seemed that only the Blackstone Library was being singled out. And so that was the reason for the three votes against. I thought that we were pretty well sandbagged. And despite the fact that a, if you'll forgive the expression, a deal was cut to make that half of all the, the cut that was voted on in committee, I still don't like it. And I think that that, all that money should be restored to them, unless we would like to go through the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the, and all the administrative departments to see how their snowplow and bills and mimeograph machine bills are coming out, because that's the kind of thing that was being done on the Blackstone.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Representative Bridger?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to just comment on Representative Jackson's comment.
Point of order. The motion right now, I mean, they're really, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Jackson's, you know, I let it go going, but the motion on the floor right now is the amendment to the underlying motion, and I think that the comments really of Representative Jackson, and it seems what the discussion we may be entering into is on the underlying motion. So let's deal with the amendment, which is, so if people have an objection or thoughts about changing the committee report, that's what we should be addressing now. And then when we get to that, we can deal with the any, the committee report as amended. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I feel that it's appropriate to talk about Representative Jackson, and about he kind of indicated that deals were made. And I think I just wanted to read to Representative Jackson, the powers of the RTM on Section 2, Part F. Can I read that, please? "The RTM shall have power to decrease, increase, or add items to the budget, but in no case shall the total amount of the budget exceed the total amount recommended by the Board of Finance." Basically, what we're saying, Representative Jackson, is we have the right to question. We have the right to ask for invoices. And I think your statement is unfair, and I commend Representative Preet for asking such questions. We have a responsibility to make sure that things are being spent properly. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment portion of this? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment that Representative Preet proposed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
All right, let's have a show of hands. All those in favor of the amendment? All opposed? The amendment passes. That concludes you, or everything else, though. We could go to Representative Black, we're talking about, if you want to do a representative item.
You have the main motion.
Still have to vote on the amended motion.
Yeah, we vote on amended motion.
Amended motion.
Yeah. Need to vote on the amendment, amended motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Amendment motion. We could do, I guess, to Representative Black's point, nine and 10 pertain to the education portion of the budget. We might as well get that out of the way.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
Point of order, I think we'd have to move those items on the agenda to do that.
Well, the only thing is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna think this, you know, we could, we can do that when we get down to that, because I, we've always, we've never moved them up into the, to do that before, okay? So Education Committee is done, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Next committee is Administrative Services. Representative Alphon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You just want a committee report on changes, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So Admin Services met twice, April 8th and May 1st. The budgets for each committee were approved with the exception of two, the first being IT. There was an increase to the IT department of $38,000. $37,000 of that was for the Munis accounting system. It's going to have to be upgraded within the next year. April 2019 is the last time that we can actually use that system. The newer software, the newer system, provides all of our accounts payable, accounts receivable for the town. So this is going to have to get done one way or another. We figured to add it to the budget for next year rather than come to contingency and take it out of there. The other $1,000 for IT was kind of mixed up from the Board of Finance. They had reduced some software upgrades for the police software in the cars. They reduced it by a little bit too much. We were just adding that back in so that we could have the software upgrades to computers, so we didn't have to actually upgrade the computers for another couple years. The second amended budget, I guess, from what the Board of Finance recommended, would be for Human Services. And the committee approved a reduction of $37,775, which would keep the Human Services Department at a steady operating balance from 2017, 2018. And that was approved, both were approved through committee with four to zero vote.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Any discussion on the motion for Administrative Services? Representative Henshaw?
Yes, just, just a point of order. Would it be possible to, to split this vote into two parts and vote on the software, tough book is one item, and vote on the Counseling Center as a second, so we could have discussion on that?
An amendment.
Then I'd like, I'd like to make an amendment, that we treat those two separately, if that's possible.
We could, we could do that, if you want.
I'll second.
I don't appreciate that motion. So we'll take the first one first, Anthony, is the reduction from the motion.
Human Services, can I make a motion?
No, he wants to make an amendment.
I would make an amendment that we add $38,000 to the Admin Services budget for software and for some repairs to the tough books, software repairs to the tough books.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Moderator? I'd like some clarification. You want to add another $38,000?
No, I'd just like to vote separately on these two issues. Vote separately on the addition and the subtraction.
So, yeah, you guys are a little confused. Are you making an amendment to, to the committee report?
I'm not sure how to handle this procedurally, but I think we should be, there are two very distinct items here. We should have the opportunity to vote up or down on each one individually.
You want to handle each department individually, I believe, in order. So the committee report wouldn't necessarily change for the IT department. We just want to vote on that separate from Human Services.
Is that what you're...
Correct.
You okay with that?
You okay? Representative Henshaw, are you okay with that?
I didn't quite hear what you said.
I'm sorry. So you don't want to actually amend the committee report, you just want to vote on each budget separate?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm okay with that. We need a motion for that. I'll second.
So we'll take the first one first, and which was, again?
IT. IT. I'd like to, IT, adding $38,000 to the IT budget.
Good. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Over there, Mr. Moderator.
Representative Walker?
Mr. Moderator, isn't there a motion on the floor that was seconded that we should vote upon?
The $38,000.
Prior to Representative Henshaw's comment, was there not a motion on the floor that was seconded?
No.
No?
Okay.
The committee report, which you just asked, you have two pieces.
Right, right.
Okay, back to the $38,000. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Second portion of that, Anthony, is the...
The second portion would be Human Services, and that was a reduction of $37,775. And that did get approved through committee with a four to zero vote, which was unanimous , I think.
Any discussion on that? Representative Sullivan?
I'll just speak briefly. Looking at the budget and some of the communication that's gone around, it looks like the Counseling Center is going to be losing a significant amount of funding from the state. And knowing that they provide services to citizens in our community that need a lot, the most amount of help, I think that it's short-sighted to add an additional cut of the money that we would be giving the Counseling Center until we see how they handle the cuts that are going to be coming from funds they're not getting from the state. I'll be opposing this motion.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Sorry, just to add to that quickly. There was this additional $16,000, I believe,
that was added to a grant that they did receive this year, that was not accounted for in the budget. So there's an additional $16,000 of income coming in, correct? Peter, is that number correct? Peter? I'm sorry, was that $16,000 in additional funds? Eight thousand, I apologize. So there was an additional... Thirty-two thousand. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on this item? Representative Comey?
Yes, thank you. So you're saying that's a reduction, another reduction of $8,000?
Addition.
Oh, an increase.
Addition and increase. Eight more.
I will also be voting no on this, and that's because of one of the things that Chris mentioned with the reduction of state services that, and the grants that they've lost this year. And these services provide our most vulnerable in our community, and the residents should be a priority, and taking away their safety nets doesn't make sense to me personally. And I think that I'm not in favor of cutting social services in Branford for our neighbors. And I hope that we, as a body, would be more focused on removing barriers for opportunity, barriers so that they, that all folks have opportunities here in Branford.
Representative Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Any questions for Representative Comey? You just alluded to grants they've lost this year. Which grants did they lose this year?
Next year, they will be losing the $60,000 and the $24,000, is my understanding?
Is that done, or is that a guess? Is that a done deal, or is that a guess that we're making? I don't, I don't know.
Okay, the $60,000 is a grant that we get from, from Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. Because the state cut the, the grants or some of the funding to DMIS, that was passed on to us. So we normally get $60,000 that gets filtered through BH Care, which is the local mental health authority. Since they got the cut, then we also got that cut. The $24,000 was for the electronic records, and that comes from DSS. Problem with that is that we have to meet... Problem with that is that we have to meet criteria for meaningful use. We weren't able to do that because they have the criteria of ten objectives that we have to, we have to reach. And part of that, we can't do it. It's almost impossible to do it. And plus, some of the docs that we were using to, to supply information to DSS left, and we couldn't use that information. So, a combination of a couple of things, we lost that twenty-four thousand.
Okay, any further discussion on the item? Representative Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm, I'm curious as to how you say, sir, that we cannot answer that and we can't come up with an answer for that. Is something wrong with the record-keeping, or it takes too much personal time for folks, or what?
No, it's, what it is, it, the government decides that there's ten objectives that anybody who is applying for funding for being, to get reimbursed for the electronic records. So, this is coming from the feds, and the feds decided that there's a criteria, and out of the cri- out of the ten criteria, and there's just a, and I have the list behind me, but it's very complicated because there's three on that list that we can meet. One is have electronic records. Another one is to use electronic prescribing, which we do. Another one is to try to have a portal for, if you go to your doc, you can get your information if you go online, and it's a portal that they provide for you. We're trying to do the same thing. Our clients have difficulty doing that. And there's a bunch of other things that have to do with medical information that really don't apply for us. So, it was, it was a situation that we wouldn't be able to get anyway of the twenty-four thousand. And that was kind of temporary over a couple of years, and then it would end. It was just a, I think it was like a three-year deal.
Representative Zambrono?
Peter, I just wanna clarify that it's not just Branford residents that go to the Counseling Center?
No, they're Branford residents.
Everyone.
Everyone. The people, if they start at the Counseling Center, they decide to move it to East Haven. We follow up, we care with them until we can move them to another provider. It's bad practice to have somebody move and just stop the services. So, what we try to do is to work with them in establishing another, another connection with another provider.
So, they would come to Branford, let's say, from East Haven, and then?
Until we can get them hooked up with another provider. Because if we, especially if we're doing medication therapy, we don't wanna stop the medications while they're trying to find somebody else. And so, we try to help them try and find another provider in the, in the area that they're in.
Thank you.
Representative Toehoe?
Our chairman, Anthony Alphon, did an excellent job. He looked into the last three years at the Counseling Center. Everybody likes the Counseling Center, they do an outstanding job. Peter is an outstanding director. He's been with us for six or seven years now after Pat stepped down, you know, she retired. She also did an outstanding job. But Anthony looked at the records, and there's been a surplus the last three years. This last fiscal year, there was a surplus of sixty-three thousand dollars. That goes into their own fund. That does not go to the town undesignedated fund balance. So, because we're gonna keep it flat this year, right? The town operating income into the Counseling Center is over one million dollars a year. That's about eight thousand dollars a day taxpayers are paying to run the Counseling Center, and they aren't using it all. So, what we're gonna do is keep it the same as last year. We're not cutting back, we're not being cruel, we're being economically prudent, which is our duty as, as representatives to our constituents. There were two items that caught our eye. Over the last several years, your tax dollars through the Counseling Center have been paying thirty thousand dollars per year to bring two Yale Child Study Center fellows to the Counseling Center. Peter talked to them this year, asked, did it be zero payment? Because they aren't even, you know, full physicians yet. And Peter got them down to fifteen thousand we're supposed to pay. And the other thing is that what they wanted to do was to hire a, what they wanted to do was to, was to spend twenty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-thirteen dollars for a brand-new position as a case manager for half a year. And, you know, so, they have, they've had the surplus. In fact, they're still gonna have a surplus even with keeping the town's contribution flat. And the other thing is, you know, as Peter said, there's a, we have in town BH Care, a mental health authority, as Peter said, and they also provide similar services. So, it's, this whole thing should be looked at. You know, that's our duty as RTM representatives to our taxpayers. These are tax dollars that are being spent, and we must ensure that they are spent the most, the most efficient way possible. That's what we're expected to do.
Mr. Moderator? Yes. Sure you. Can I ask Finance Director Finch how this affects the budget and how, how we should be doing these adjustments?
A lot of anticipation there, right? I actually think there's a couple of things that are at work here, and so, let me try to put it in context and then maybe at the end, explain to you mechanically how this needs to work. One, I'll start with philosophy. You may recall a few years back, it was a recommendation from the Board of Finance to establish a, a Human Services Fund. And one may wanna ask, well, why did we wanna do that? And I think, one of the reasons, I think, is echoed in, in the philosophy was, well, what is a taxpayer's subsidy, if you will, to the Counseling Center operation? Not whether we should or shouldn't, which is part of the argument I understand tonight, but what is that? How do we measure that? And so, by setting it up in a separate fund, you can measure it because at the end of the year, the fund either has, you know, a surplus or a deficit. And, and that, that, that change in accounting, which we worked on with our auditors, I think was critical to Peter because he wanted to make some changes at the Counseling Center. And I think he's aligned with what I'm hearing tonight in terms of trying to reduce the taxpayer subsidies. I think, I think it's fair to say everybody's on the same page with that. So, so, so in essence, that's a good thing. In terms of trying to use that to reduce the taxpayer subsidy, you know, well, that's, that's similar to what the Board of Finance does because the Board of Finance actually controls revenues in the town. So, when the Board of Finance appropriates, you know, two million, eight-seventy-five or six-point-four million in the current year in light of all the state budget crisis, you know, a fund balance is being used to, you know, reduce taxpayer contributions. So, in this year's bud, in, in the requested budget, Peter, you know, the Board of Finance approved using twenty-five thousand dollars from the Counseling Center's fund balance. And I think inherent in some of the arguments was, well, you know, should it be more based on their operations over the past three years? And, you know, obviously, that's, that's an interesting question and one in which, you know, good people can discuss at length. But the other thing, the final thing is mechanically is, because of what the RTMs charge is, you essentially, and Mr. Gert Ricciello pointed out in some of his opening statements from reading the code, you essentially establish what the spending amounts are in the object code. You're not essentially dealing with the revenue. So, so if you're basically reducing by thirty-seven thousand, what was it, seven-fifty, was it? So, if you're reducing thirty-seven, seven-fifty in a general fund, well, you have to also make that reduction in the Human Services Fund. All right? So, when, so when you look at, at page sixty-nine of the budget presentation, that, those reductions have to occur in the expenditure areas because if they don't, what happens is when you get to item thirteen on your agenda for the Human Services Fund, it's, it's gonna be out of sync. So, if, if that is the right reduction to make, and again, it's not my position to say whether it is or isn't, mechanically, you have to make some adjustments on the expenditure side to equal the reduction that you're making on the general fund contribution.
We did make a amendment to, it's number thirteen on the call for the full RTM tonight, and we reduced it by the same amount.
Yes, but, 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 that, that's good. However, that, that number is the sum of parts, right? So, for example, when you, when you look at the town operating budgets and the town departments is fifty-four, nine-twenty-four, one-oh-nine, as Dennis read at the beginning of the meeting, well, well, that, that resolution reflects the sum of a bunch of parts. And what I'm saying is, you have to reduce those parts to get to that number. Does everybody understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, so that, that, so mechanically, what you need to do is include, if, if the desire is to reduce the amount that the Counseling Center can spend, okay? Then you would have to identify, you know, a component or components to affect that. Now, if the Counseling Center, after the budget's adopted, wishes to restore that, then, then their only option at that point would be, and again, I think it, it ties to some of the philosophical arguments I'm hearing, is to actually go back to the Board of Finance and ask that the budget be increased and, from, from increased estimated revenues, which would be asking the Board of, you know, they'd ask the Board of Finance to take more out of the fund balance. So, so, so then, and that, and so the mechanics of that would be, well, then they would restore that the cuts you're making so that the components equal the resolution, and you would basically be saying, but, we didn't end up taxing for it. And then other folks would say, okay, as long as the services aren't being cut and in air, at a time when Human Services are needed probably more than ever. So, that, that's kinda, I think, what we're, what you're looking at here. And I know I probably spoke for twelve minutes, but hopefully, I, hopefully I explained it in a way that, that makes sense to everybody, so.
All right, so.
I would.
No questions, Representative Henshaw?
It's not a question, just a further comment in our discussion.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to point out that the, the amount that we're reducing, the Counseling Center, proposing to reduce the Counseling Center of thirty-seven thousand dollars, if you were a homeowner with a modest home appraised at a quarter of a million dollars, that's gonna amount to two dollars and sixty cents change on your tax bill. That's what we're talking about here to, to make this type of a cut in the service.
Can I, I'm sorry, Senator Alphon, we set, what was, what needs to be done on this thing? So, Jim, in layman's terms, tell, tell us, tell us, tell us what we need to do with this.
There you go. He can't direct it.
Well, I, I.
I mean, we already know what, what they did, so, I mean, what is, what is the Administrative Services Committee have, have to do about the fund, the fund balance you were saying? So, do.
Well, the Administrative Services Committee wouldn't do anything with fund balance because the RTM doesn't deal with revenues. So, let's take that off the table for a second. What the Administrative Services essentially has to do is make the reduction in the two funds. The, what I heard tonight was thirty-seven, seven, seventy-five was making the reduction in the general fund. So, the reduction now has to be made in the Human Services Fund because they're separate funds and, at the risk of not using layman's terms, basically, you know, a fund is its own accounting entity with a self-balancing set of accounts. So, so you got two different funds, and you have to keep, keep the funds in balance. So, you know, you, you know, the committee has set a direction that they wanna see expenditures reduced in the Human Services Fund, and all I'm saying is, so that when we enter the data into the financial system, so that it actually, the two funds are in balance, where, where's that reduction gonna occur?
You needed to come out of a line item.
Or line items, yeah. It has to, it has to come out of someplace. I mean, again, not, not, not saying where it should come from, but assuming, of course, that the thirty-seven, seven, seventy-five had some elements of it to come up with that total, you know, you've identified some areas. So, I think just mechanically, you gotta, you gotta say what accounts.
Question, Jim. The department would receive a operating fund in, say, a lump sum, and they can pretty much attribute that lump sum to any line item that they would like, correct?
Uh, no.
For a transfer.
Yeah, and, uh, no, I mean, and basically, you know, this, this budget, if you kinda look at the way it's, it's built and you kinda reverse engineer it, so, so the Counseling Center identifies expenditure. So, in this case, they have identified one million, five-eighteen, four-thirty-two in expenditures. Then, okay, what revenues do they have to offset the tax requirements? So, they have four-hundred-and-twenty thousand in fees and services, twenty-four thousand in grants, and then a twenty-five thousand from a, from a carry, you know, prior year's fund balance, similar to the way we do on the operating budget. So, then the thing is, okay, well, then what are the tax requirements to balance that budget? And so, the tax requirements are a million, forty-nine, four-thirty-two, which is the operating transfer in. Now, you've reduced that by thirty-seven, seven, seventy-five, so now you gotta go back and identify the line items of thirty-seven, seventy-five, so that, so that you're in balance. I mean, basically, that's.
Just one more verification through you, Mr. Moderator. Jim, when changes come to the Counseling Center's budget, did, did they come to us?
Yes.
Make changes?
Yeah, I, I think about a year or two ago, there was, you were adjusting the salary of a position, and, and that came to the RTM. Now, the budgets where you're not doing line item control over is essentially the Board of Education and the library. But, but again, you know, so the library's a little bit different because in the library, it's just one line item in our budget, and then there is, they're a separate organization. Library's not a fund on our system.
Yeah.
So, in essence, we're making a grant to the library.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to take a recess, gentlemen.
Five minutes recess, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The recess for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. After some discussion, I guess we do have to make an amendment to the motion. Instead of just reducing the total operating balance brought forward, I'd like to make a amendment to the motion to reduce the thirty-seven, seven, seventy-five from the regular wages and salaries account, still sticking with the dollar amount that the committee put forward. And then, the Human Services Department can always come to us afterwards, and we can adjust money if needed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who seconded? Representative Toehoe? Discussion?
Representative Sullivan? Yeah. Just to clarify?
On the amendment?
Yeah, this is the amendment.
Okay.
Just to clarify, that is the regular wages and salaries, which in the budget books was a request of one million, ninety-seven, ninety-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars.
Correct.
And so, you're reducing the increase of fifty-five, eight-thirty by thirty-seven, seven, seventy-five?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it, the item carries. Okay, well now, we're moving on to R and O, Rules and Ordinances. Representative Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On April seventeenth, rules and ordinance is met with your budget presentations by head of town departments assigned to our committee. After review of those budgets and after those presentations, motions to approve the budgets as proposed to the Board of Finance passed individually and unanimously. There were no changes, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Motion on the floor to approve the Rules and Ordinances budget as recommended by the Board of Finance, there was no changes. Anybody? Anybody have any amendments to that? If not, Representative Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to simply make a comment from Rules and Ordinances of the seven departments who presented in front of us. Actually, there were six, because Conservation and Environment, for the second year in a row, did not show, and my recommendation to our committee was, if they pulled a no-show for the third year in a row, we should simply zero out their budget, as important as we think Conservation and Environment are. But for them to diss us like that was not appropriate, two years in a row, and certainly wouldn't be for three. That's, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation for RNO to adopt their budget items as recommended by the Board of Finance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we move on to Public Services. Representative Conklin.
The Public Service Committee heard the budget presentations on April 5, and met to vote on them on May the 3. Through the nine budgets, our end vote was to make no changes. So we would recommend accepting the budget as presented by the Board of Finance.
Okay. Motion on the floor to approve the Public Services budget items as recommended by the Board of Finance, is there any amendments to that? Representative Riccio?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to make a motion to amend the Public Services budget and reduce the police overtime ask number, which is, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to amend the Public Services budget and reduce the police overtime ask line item, which is line item number 1014, 2010, 518, 000, looking at page 30, from This is a reduction of $20,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Who seconded? Representative Brockett? Any discussion?
Just for the fun of it.
Representative Sullivan?
I'm going to rise in support of Representative Riccio. Because I figure it doesn't happen much.
This is a historic evening. Thank you.
Yeah, just looking at the year-to-date for this line item, I think that they'll be okay for next year.
Okay, any further discussion? Representative Black?
We must have slipped through a wormhole into the open universe.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? For the amendment of $20,000 for the police overtime, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Oh, boy, all right.
We would, because that's an amendment to the committee report.
Okay, now we need a vote on the motion as amended. All those in favor of the motion as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, item carries. Last but not least, Ways and Means. Representative Black?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ways and Means met on our budgets in the regular two meetings. Last one, we took a vote, four members were present. There was one modification to the Board of Finance recommendations, and that modification was to, passed unanimously, was to reduce the contingency by $76,955 to bring it to a total amount of $999,999. So that's committee reports, I put that in form of a motion. And we, I don't know, Representative Brockett here, I don't know if you want to make a minority report on it.
No, I'm good with your report, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, that's in the form of a motion. Any discussion on the motion, or any amendments to that? Hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, okay. Mr. Finch, can you, we're going to take a, I'll give you five minutes, so we'll take a five-minute recess, and give me a, give us me an update.
Mr. Moderator, could we do 10 minutes, please?
I'll grant Representative Sullivan's request.
Are you guys serious?
So this is the adjusted figures after the different changes from the committees. The education portion of the budget stood the same, 57,262,843. The town side went to 54,817,528, for a total of reduction of 106,581. So at this point. Oh, Representative Black, you want to come?
Just a point of information, after the committee recommended modification to the contingency, contingency fund for coming into next year will actually be $1,274,216. The difference there was, when I gave that number before, I hadn't accounted for the transfer that the Board of Finance made from the paramedic salaries into contingencies, so the reduction stays the same, and we'll enter the new fiscal year as contingency is a little more. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, is there any further amendments to the overall budget? Representative Jackson?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Continuing on my point about Blackstone Library, which I believe was amended to reduce the amount for the Blackstone Library by $9,852, which was half of the requested amount. My amendment would be to add $9,852 to restore the original request. That $9,852 would result in an increase to the average taxpayer in Branford of 69 cents.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Just to add a little bit of discussion, just looking at that line item, the library had actually already reduced that line item for the maintenance and repair of the property, and knowing that some of those funds are used for their snow plowing, and it seems like this winter, every couple of days, we had another snowpocalypse, I would like to make sure that the library actually does have enough funds to cover their snow plowing for this year.
Okay. Any further discussion? Representative Tohill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Blackstone is a very unique institution, in that the town of Branford provides 86.4% of its operating expense. However, the Blackstone has to pay for its own grass cutting, and as we just heard from Chris, snow plowing, they also take care of the interior of their structure, which, as we all know, is a magnificent building, but it's old, and it costs extra, I guess, you know, to maintain an old building. So we're talking about the elevator, all from that same account. Now, they can come back to us if they, you know, run short. I believe that the present cut, you know, it's before us, is prudent and also reasonable. The point is, is possibly the town could take over some of the operations. You know, it's expensive to have the snow plowed over there by a private contractor, because we did examine the invoices that we requested, we saw how much it cost, and what the contractor's doing over there is, they're actually charging the Blackstone by the inch for snow removal, and it's expensive, but if possibly the Public Works could take that over, that's the same with a cutting of the grass. They did switch contractors for the grass cutting recently, but it's, you know, it's a large piece of land, and it's expensive. So I think that by leaving it as is, we're kind of focusing attention on it, and, you know, we're going to see if the town could maybe take over part of it. Thank you.
Any further discussions? Representative Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would just say, after Frank's comments, that the critical deal here is, the Blackstone Library, as much of a jewel as it is, is not town property. And we're talking about funding and continuously funding what is not town property, and I don't happen to concur with that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Representative Preet?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to address some of Mr. Jackson's comments, what was requested from the library was not all of their invoices, what I requested was the maintenance contracts for HVAC, for the elevator, and for the grounds. The director over there chose to send me everything, per decision. So as far as micromanaging, we're not micromanaging them. What I think came out of this was a very good discussion between myself and Representative Sandler, who's very involved with the library, and we talked about the expense that they're paying for HVAC, for the elevators, year upon year upon year, and we talked about maybe getting some shared services. We have nine buildings that the town owns that are maintained, can we not have the town pay for the library, but perhaps look to add them to the town contracts out, to get a better deal? That's all we talked about. We didn't make a deal. We talked about, you know, scrutinizing those large contracts, that's all. We also, at the subcommittee meeting, and you were there, we told the library board that if they fall short of this money, they can come back and ask for it, and in the five years that I've been on this board, we've never refused giving them additional money. So all we're saying is, we have an undesignated fund balance, we have a contingency, and the library's looking for more money for maintenance that they may or may not need. So the point was, if you don't need it, let's not tax the taxpayers for it. If you need it, you can come back to us and get it. If that's scrutinizing, then so be it, then I'm scrutinizing. Thank you.
Representative Riccio?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I love when politicians say, oh, if we just add X amount of dollars, it's only a dollar per year for a household. There's 45 departments. So use that logic, that means extra 45 bucks for each department, add the Board of Education, you're going to add another 45, maybe 50. So you're talking about, if you use that logic, Representative Jackson, you're adding $100 to the taxpayers' already tax bill. So that logic doesn't fly with me, and I'm sure it doesn't fly with a lot of people in this body. So I would ask you to kind of reconsider that thinking, unless you love high taxes, which it sounds like you do. So that's all I have to say about that.
All right. Any further discussion on the item?
Mr. Moderator, I think I go to a response. No, I don't like higher taxes, but the Blackstone Library is a treasure for the town, and I do understand that we should be mindful of all the expenditures, but we're talking here, this was cherry picked, this maintenance number. I think to teach the Blackstone Library a lesson, and my point simply is not to raise everybody's hackles, but to say that the Blackstone Library may not be a town facility, but can you imagine what it might cost us if we had to build a library, we didn't have the Blackstone? I mean, it's, especially the way we're going, it's a real bargain, is what I'm trying to say, and I'm not trying to increase the taxes, I'm just trying to show you how petty this cherry picking of expenses was. And as far as Representative Tohill's explanation about how snow plowing is done by the inch, that's how it's done? I'm sorry, buddy.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none? All those.
Mr. Moderator, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote? Just, Representative Sullivan, I have a question. Why didn't Representative Jackson offer this amendment when we were doing the committee report?
You could ask Representative Jackson.
Representative Jackson?
Yes.
Why didn't you offer this amendment when the committee gave us a report?
We didn't know the system, I'm sorry.
You didn't know the system? Okay. Okay. You want to have a roll call vote on this? Representative Sullivan?
Yes, if you're asking. I want to break in our new clerk.
Okay.
All right, roll call vote. Okay, Representative Adelman?
Yes.
Representative Alphonse?
No.
Representative Anderson?
No.
Representative Black?
No.
Representative Brockett?
Yes.
Representative Buchanan?
Yes.
Representative Comey?
Yes.
Representative Conklin?
No.
Representative Dakhnovich?
Yes.
Representative DiAdamo?
No.
Representative Dunbar?
Yes.
Representative Flanagan?
You don't vote.
Representative Hall?
Yes.
Representative Henshaw?
Yes.
Representative Ingraham?
No.
Representative Jackson?
Yes.
Representative, here, Representative Lawler?
No.
Representative Leonard?
No.
Representative Preet?
No.
Representative Riccio?
No.
Representative Sandler?
No.
Representative Stepanek? He's not here. Representative Sullivan?
Yes.
Representative Torelli?
Yes.
Representative Tohill?
No.
Representative Walker?
No.
Representative Wells?
Nope.
And Representative Zambrano?
No.
I think that it does not pass.
Okay, the motion is defeated. Any further amendments to the budget? Oh, okay. You have your hand up, Representative Comey?
So for the next budget, right? Is that correct?
What's that?
For the next budget, or are we still on the Blackstone?
No, the Blackstone.
Any budget.
Any budget, okay. Thank you, thank you for clarifying, I appreciate that, Mr. Moderator. I would like to make a motion to amend the Human Services Budget, to put in $20,000. I think that we really need to continue to serve the clients of Branford. Earlier, there was a comment by Representative Zambrano about some of our folks that may have to leave Branford for one reason or another, and go to another town, but that would still receive services from East Haven, I mean, living in East Haven or some other area, until they could find another doctor, and that, in the mental health field, that is. And that, in the mental health field, that is standard practice, and it would be irresponsible to discontinued services for the mentally, mental health services suddenly like that. And they do help to transition. And putting in an efficient caseworker, putting in another caseworker, which is what this was for, salaries, out of the salaries, that they would be able to work more efficiently and to get people placed in other care services. So did I make it clear what my amendment is? So my amendment is to put 20, to
Increase.
Increase the salaries and wages lined by $20,000.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion by Representative Comey for $20,000 into the Human Services Budget signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, all the noes?
No.
All right. Motion is defeated. Any other additional amendments at this point? Representative Sullivan?
All right. So one of the things that we discussed a little bit was the Tough Books for the police cars. And so I know that was removed by the Board of Finance. So now that we have some money that's been cut, I would like to move to restore $18,625 to replace five Tough Books in the police squad cars. It's my understanding that many of these computers are running 24 hours a day. Some of them are on Windows XP operating systems, which I believe Representative Ingraham would agree is a little outdated. And I think that it's important to give our officers the best technology to allow them to be efficient and effective while they're protecting the citizens of Branford. And I'll put that in the form of a motion to put the $18,625 back into the IT budget for Tough Books.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment of putting the $18,000 into the police budget signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion is defeated. Any other amendments? Representative Brockett?
Just thank you, Mr. Moderator. I make a motion to move $66,922 to fund the police captain's position that was cut by the Board of Finance. There are three reasons why I think that this position needs to be funded. The first reason is, is this position has not been eliminated. It was funded to the tune of 25% because a police captain is retiring in either August or September, and 75% of that salary was cut going forward. I think that was inappropriate due to the fact that the captain is a bargaining unit position, and the chief at a public services committee indicated that there was no agreement reached with the union to eliminate the position. So we're going to have the position going forward, so the position should be funded. The second reason the position needs to be funded is, if some of the representatives here may recall, back in 2011, there was a, the Police Defined Benefit Plan was eliminated, and instead, there was a Defined Contribution Plan for all new members. So any member hired after 2011 was no longer eligible to participate in the Defined Benefit Plan. And the net result of that is the turnover in the police department has been incredibly high over the last seven years. And the reason there's been a lot of turnover is because we hire the officers, the taxpayer pays their salary, we train the officers, the taxpayer pays for all that training, and then we lose the officers to a town that hasn't defined benefit plan and a disability plan, neither of which this town has. So that's the second reason this position needs to be funded. The third reason, and following up on that, is when you have a captain's position, that's the highest position in the bargaining unit. If there's an elimination of a captain, then there's no additional upward mobility for the lieutenants and the sergeants to progress upward. That's one position lost. So with less upward mobility and no pension, we're going to have more officers that are going to be leaving, and it's going to have an increased turnover. And the third reason I think this position needs to be funded is because I think the town needs a policy that is consistent. And right now, there is an inconsistent policy in the town with respect to funding positions. And what I mean by that is, the Public Services Director right now, salary is $100,666, and that position has been vacant since January of 2017. It was funded for fiscal 2017, '18, and it's currently being funded for fiscal year 2019 to the tune of $100,666, and there's no one in that position. There's another position, Human Resources Director, where the employee in that position is working part-time, but the position is fully funded. And there's an Assistant Human Resources position that's fully funded to the tune of some $60,000, and that position is also vacant and not advertised. So we have three positions that are vacant, that are either fully funded or partially funded, and we have one position that's going to be vacant, but it's not going to be eliminated, and it's not being funded. I therefore draw my colleagues to fund this position to the tune of $66,922, and I put that in the form of a motion. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing none. All the favor of the motion? Representative Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think the points made were actually quite appropriate. I'm not certain they're most appropriate in this forum at this time. But with our first selectman and our Chief Financial Officer, Finance Director, here, I think this is something that really needs to be taken up in that we put, if I could go through you, Mr. Moderator, to Captain Dunbar, what it costs to put someone through the police academy, about $35,000. But it's probably $100,000 when you put it all in, in terms of training on the job and so forth. And we keep losing people left and right. It's not a good situation, not a good investment. So something possibly could be done better than it is being done. That's all. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion by Representative Brockett signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion is defeated.
Ask for a roll call vote.
We just voted. It's too late.
I thought it was pretty close.
No. Pretty close. I don't think so. Any other amendments to the budget?
Yes, I have another amendment. Hold on, I have to make sure I get the math right on this one. Since this is the budget and we're approving the budget tonight, I think it is the time to bring up issues with salary positions and how it would affect taxes going forward. And since we just attempted to fully fund a position in the town and it was voted down, I would like to make a motion to eliminate the salary and wages for the Public Works Director of a tune of $100,666. I would like to cut the Director of Human Resources salary in half to a tune of $42,025. And I would like to cut the Assistant HR Director's salary of $60,193. That would be a total of $202,884. This would be consistent with the way that we're handling the other position, the captain's position in the police department. I think there's also significant savings to the taxpayer, and I don't believe we should be funding ghost salaries for positions and people that don't exist. On top of that, all those positions are also getting raises in this budget, which doesn't make sense to me since there's nobody there. And we're approving contracts right now where new hires are starting at 85% of their salary, yet we're increasing salaries for people that don't exist. So even if we were to hire somebody, it seems like the precedent that the town is setting is that they're going to start lower than 100% of the salary. So I definitely don't think we need to have the raise. And to be consistent with other positions, I believe we shouldn't be funding them at all of this budget. Thank you.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call vote on this, please.
Okay. There is no further discussion. We'll have a roll call vote. Yes is a vote in favor of Representative Sullivan's motion. No is a rejection of it.
Okay. Representative Adelman?
Yes.
Representative Alphon?
No.
Representative Anderson?
No.
Representative Black?
No.
Representative Brockett?
Yes.
Representative Buchanan, yes. Representative Comey?
Yes.
Representative Conklin?
No.
Representative Doknovich?
Yes.
Representative Diadamo?
No.
Representative Dunbar?
Yes.
Representative Flanagan?
You don't vote.
Representative Hall?
Oh, yes.
Yes. Representative Henshaw?
Yes.
Representative Ingraham?
No.
Representative Jackson?
Yes.
Representative Lawler?
No.
Representative Leonard?
No.
Representative Preet?
No.
Representative Rikio?
Pass.
Representative Sandler?
I almost convinced him.
Representatives not here. Sullivan? Representative Sullivan?
Yes.
Representative Turelli?
Yes.
Representative Toohill?
No.
Representative, Walker?
No.
Representative Wells?
No.
Representative Zambrano?
No.
And then I go back to Rikio?
Yes.
Yes?
Thank you, Representative Rikio.
All right. I think the noes have it.
Motion is defeated. Okay. Motion is defeated. Any further amendments to the budget? Hearing none. We'll move on and do Item 5 and 6 next, and we'll do a roll call vote for each item. Item 5 is to consider it appropriate, approve the recommendation of the Board of Finance of an appropriation of $57,262,843 to the Board of Education, operating capital, the budget plus capital for fiscal year 2018-2019. And that will be a roll call vote.
Okay. All righty. Representative Adelman?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, can you just clarify? I couldn't hear. We're only doing the Board of Ed again?
No, we're going to do the Board of Ed, and then we're going to, Item 6 is the town department.
Correct, but this motion that's on
For the Board of Ed.
Okay. I'm just
Have you voted on the town?
No, you still have to vote on each item here. This is the appropriation, okay? It's a roll call vote. Go ahead.
Do we say that every year?
We do that every year, Representative Black?
No, we use it every year.
Okay. Representative Adelman, I have you as a yes. Representative Alphon?
Yes.
Representative Anderson?
Yes.
Representative Black?
Yes.
Representative Brockett?
Yes.
Representative Buchanan, yes. Representative Comey?
Yes.
Representative Conklin?
Yes.
Representative Doknovich?
Yes.
Representative Diadamo?
Yes.
Representative Dunbar?
Yes.
Representative Hall?
Yes.
Representative Henshaw?
Yes.
Representative Ingraham?
Yes.
Representative Jackson?
Yes.
Representative Lawler?
Yes.
Representative Leonard?
Yes.
Representative Preet?
Yes.
Representative Rikio?
Yes.
Representative Sandler?
Yes.
Representative Sullivan?
Yes.
Representative Turelli?
No.
Representative Toohill?
Yes.
Representative Walker?
Yes.
Representative Wells?
Yes.
And Representative Zambrano?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. Item number 6, to consider it appropriate, approve the recommendation of the Board of Finance of an appropriation of 54, this is an adjusted amount, of $54,817,528 for other town departments' operating budget plus capital for the fiscal year 2018-2019. This will be a roll call vote also.
Representative Adelman?
Yes.
Representative Alphon?
Yes.
Representative Anderson?
Yes.
Representative Black?
Yes.
Representative Brockett?
Yes.
Representative Buchanan, yes. Representative Comey?
No.
Representative Conklin?
Yes.
Representative Doknovich?
Yes.
Representative Diadamo?
Yes.
Representative Dunbar?
Yes.
Representative Hall?
Yes.
Representative Henshaw?
No.
Representative Ingraham?
Yes.
Representative Jackson?
No.
Representative Lawler?
Yes.
Representative Leonard?
Yes.
Representative Preet?
Yes.
Representative Rikio?
Yes.
Representative Sandler?
Yes.
Representative Sullivan?
No.
Representative Turelli?
No.
Representative Toohill?
Yes.
Representative Walker?
Yes.
Representative Wells?
Yes.
And Representative Zambrano?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Motion carries. Item number 8, I mean, item number 7, rather, to consider it appropriate, approve the recommendation of the Board of Finance of an appropriation of $59,283 to the Open Space Fund Budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. Representative Black?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ways and Means heard this and voted for to nothing to recommend adoption of this budget as recommended by the Board of Finance. I put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item carries. Item number 8, to consider it appropriate, approve the recommendation of the Board of Finance of an appropriation of $167,904 to the Sewer Assessment Fund Budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. Representative Black?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, Ways and Means voted on this last week and unanimously recommended approval as recommended by the Board of Finance. I put that in the form of a motion.
Motion on the floor to approve the Sewer Assessment Fund. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item carries. Item 9, to consider it appropriate, approve the recommendation of the Board of Finance of an appropriation of $60,000 to the Board of Education's Special Fund Budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. Representative Toohill?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The RTM Education Committee heard this matter. These are not tax dollars involved. This is all tuition. This is a great program that's run by Paul DeZalo. It provides adult education to the towns of Branford, North Branford, Guilford, and Clinton. It's the same request as last year, $60,000. It was heard by the committee, and the vote was yes, seven to nothing. I put that in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Motion on the floor to approve the $60,000 for the Special Education Fund. Any discussion?
I just
Representative Comey?
So this is the number nine, Board of Education's Special Fund Budget?
And that is including the ERACE? And that's it?
Yes. Yes, Representative Comey, yes.
Okay.
Yes, Representative Comey, yes.
Okay. And then, so the next one would be the Daycare Fund, would be the after-school program, which are both self-funded?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item carries. Item 10, to consider and if appropriate, approve the recommendation of the Board of Finance for appropriation of $665,250 to the Board of Education Daycare Fund Budget for fiscal year 2018-19. Representative Toohill?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The RTM Education Committee also heard this special fund. Again, this is all tuition, not tax dollars. We heard from the Director, Michelle Krumenaker. This provides our schoolchildren with schooling and programs, and also camp. They have this, they run this program at all the schools. They run the program in the morning before school and in the afternoon after school. She said that her special fund balance is $495,256. This was heard, and it was approved. The vote was seven to nothing, and I put that in the form of a motion, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion? Representative Sullivan?
Yeah, I just rise in support of this. My daughters actually use the after-school program at Murphy, and most of the time when I come to pick them up, they actually want to stay and not go home with me, so it must be a pretty good program. So I will be supporting this.
Any?
I'll have to add to that. My grandchildren go, Slimey, it's a great program.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item carries. Item 11, to consider and if appropriate, approve the recommendation of the Board of Finance of an appropriation of $4384,295 to the Wastewater Treatment Plant Budget for fiscal year 2018-19. Representative Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Of the seven budgets that RNO reviewed on the evening of the 17th, item number 11 was one of those, after an excellent and kind of riveting presentation by the department head, Dan Gregory, the committee voted unanimously to approve without change, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item carries. Item 12, to consider and appropriate, approve the recommendation of the Board of Finance of appropriation of $291,459 to the Animal Control Budget Fund for fiscal year 2018-19. Representative Conklin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think it's getting late for me, and I don't remember hearing this, but Peter was there and says I did. So we, I have to go back to my minutes. We will, I would recommend and move, yes, that we approve as recommended by the Board of Finance.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item carries. Item 13, to consider and if appropriate, approve the recommendation of the Board of Finance of an appropriation of, now this is a reduction, $1,486,57 to the Human Services Special Revenue Fund Budget for 2018-2019. Representative Alphon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This was heard by Admin Services on our May 1 meeting. There was an amendment made from the Board of Finance recommendation, and we reduced the total amount by the $37,775. The new total amount approved was $1,480,657. That came out of committee with a four to zero vote. I would put that forward as a motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Item carries. Just so you know, there's no 14. We skipped to item 15. To consider and if appropriate, approve the recommendation of the Board of Finance to the RTM that the salaries for the Register of Voters are increased by 2.5% for each year of their two-year term of office. Representative Alphon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This was not heard in committee, so I'd like to make a motion to waive Rule 4.4.1.
Second.
Motion on the floor to waive Rule 441. It's been seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question. The Register of Voters, who does that cover?
Oh, my.
That's Marion Burkhart and Dan.
Right, but it doesn't include the people voting.
Not the workers.
Okay.
All right. We got to vote on the waiving the Rule 441. All those in favor waiving the Rule 441 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Now you make the motion. You already made your motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 15, the increase of 2.5% for each year of the two-year term of office.
Second.
Second to that, Toohill?
He's quick. Right. Representative?
Got it.
Okay. Pass. The carries.
We need to vote.
Let's see. Item number 16, to, you want to vote? I'm sorry, I'm just looking over my head on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item carries. Jim, I just noticed here, there's one here that, the salary increase is for the, I thought that was on here, for the clerks, the, that's, that was last year. We don't do it this year. Okay. Got you. All right. All right, we move to 16. To consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance that enables tax exemptions for Gold Star parents and spouses. Representative Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On April 7, RNO continued discussion on a tax exemption for Gold Star parents and spouses. After discussion, the committee voted unanimously to re-refer the proposed ordinance, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Motion on the floor to re-refer this item. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item is re-referved. Item 17, to consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance for tax exemption for handicap-equipped vehicles. Representative Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Similarly, on the 17th of April, we heard on a tax exemption for handicap-equipped vehicles, and after discussion on that matter, the committee voted unanimously to re-refer, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Motion on the floor to re-refer the item. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item is re-referved. Item 18, to consider and if appropriate, approve requests for the Department of General Government Buildings for the following budget transfers. Capital fund accounts, I'm not going to read all these, so I just, you have your copies in front of you. Representative Black?
No, that would be me.
I'm sorry. Representative Leonard, Conklin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This time I do remember it.
You do remember?
Our committee heard this on May 3, and it is the sweeping of a number of closed projects, capital projects out of the 700 account. And I'll do the second part, and a few more projects that are complete out of the 720 account, and putting it into a new account to do repairs to the transfer station and roof replacement for the transfer station. It was approved in committee six to zero, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Motion on the floor to approve the transfers. Representative Sullivan?
Just a quick question through you, Mr. Moderator. Are all these closed projects from the same fiscal year, or?
Oh, no.
No? Okay. Do, so many years, just all swept together? Thank you for clarifying.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The item carries. Item 19, to consider and if appropriate, approve requests from the town engineer for the following transfer, from Counseling Services, $1,820, to Part-Time Seasonal Health, $1,820.
Also mine. My committee discussed this at our May 3 meeting, and it is to hire a college intern to do field work for storm water permitting, required by the federal government administered by the state, for an MS-IV storm water permit, which will cover five years, and basically is an unfunded mandate. We have to do it, and this is to give us a one-month head start. It's also in her, it's in her budget to carry over into next year, but this is to get us through till June 3. And I put that, that also passed our committee six to oh, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Motion on the floor to approve the town engineering transfer request. Any discussion? Hearing not? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item carries. Item 20, to approve, to consider and approve a request from the tax collector for the following budget transfer, from Resident Stickers, $514 to Membership Conference and Meetings. Representative Alphon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This was a request from the new tax collector. There was some money left over in the Resident Sticker line item, and as a new tax collector, she wanted to take some training for conferences and meetings, so she's taking that leftover money and attending the conferences. This is approved in committee with a four to zero vote, and I put that forward as a motion.
Motion on the floor to approve the tax collector's transfer. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item carries. Item 21, to consider and if appropriate, amend the fiscal '28 budget to account for the salary changes pursuant to the collective bargaining agreements for the Town Employees' Union and the Wastewater Treatment Plant employees. And again, this, Representative Black, I won't read all these, but it all corresponds to the last couple of contracts we approved. Go ahead.
Thank you. I won't read them either, unless anybody has any questions. We've got them all in front of us. This is funding raises which are retroactive for most of this fiscal year and then prospective for the remainder of this fiscal year for contracts that we've recently approved, approved, this passed in committee four to nothing, so I put that in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Motion on the floor to approve the various transfers. Any discussion? Representative Sullivan?
Yeah, so I, since we just voted on next year's budget, I noticed that there was the 5.1% increases for all these positions, so this is to address that. Can you just clarify how that works a little bit? There was some confusion on this side.
Sure. I mean, this, if you take, for the current fiscal year, an employee gets a raise of 2.5%, say, that's right here. Now, now he's starting from a bigger base, and he gets another raise next fiscal year of 2.5% compounded a little, so that if, you know, it's 5.1 from what it was before he got this raise, because when the budget book was printed, that approved item, these raises weren't in it, that's why we're doing this. So you have two years' worth of raises in the second year of the contract, so it's 5% off of the base that they started with, and this is the first half. Hopefully you follow that?
Yes.
Yes. I mean, it's pretty simple. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Transfer carries. Item number 22, any other business that come before the RTM?
I just wanted to make a quick comment that I've been both disappointed and concerned about the current budget and looking forward to the next decade of budgets that the town will be producing, that there is nothing, I haven't seen anything in our current budget that indicates that there's any planning, either in staffing increases or capital expense increases, to respond to the challenges that I think are going to be great regarding coastal resiliency and climate change and sea level rise. These are things, these are very real things that are going to be impacting the town, they're going to be impacting these budget meetings that we have in upcoming years. I think we're going to find, if not in this current reappraisal, that we're going to have a lot of the shore, more expensive shoreline properties, we're going to see values actually